All right, good afternoon, everybody. It is 1:03 PM, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If Secretary Amiho can take role.
Good morning or good afternoon. Alrighty, Secretary Amiho is here, Chair Burt.
Here.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chavez?
Here.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Gibson?
Here.
Commissioner Manas?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Vice Chair Voight?
Here.
We have a quorum of nine.
Thank you, and if I could ask Commissioner Manas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Carrillo in the salute to the Mexico flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, a perfect friendship among the united cultures.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I would like to remove item number six, that item has been resolved as of this time and does not need to be on the agenda for today. And so I will move to approve the agenda with the removal of item six.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes?
Think we need to remove the transcript from the consent agenda.
So I will do that when we get to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair.
Commissioner Carrillo?
I've not been able to get on my email now for a while, so I honestly, I don't even know what item six is, can you tell me what I'm removing?
Item number six was discussion and possible action to grant a temporary cap increase for one student for mission achievement and success charter school.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, Secretary Amiho, if you could call role.
Thank you, Chair Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Manas?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Voight?
Yes.
And Secretary Amiho votes yes, that is nine to zero, that the agenda has been approved.
All right, thank you, that will next take us to open forum, missing, were there any folks signed up to speak today? All right, thank you. And then the next one will bring us to item number four, which is the consent agenda, I'm going to remove item B, approval of the PEC transcript for October 21st, 2022, which leaves just the approval of the work session minutes, Commissioner Robbins?
Someone send me a current copy because I got like four or five different versions of the agenda, and the only one that had an agenda item six was the adjourned. So I don't know if, you know, and even on the Google Drive, I don't see apparently the most current agenda.
And Director Chavez, could you send, I see her on here, I do not see. Julia, you will? Okay. I do have, so just so you all know what I'm looking at is, I'm looking in the PEC Google Drive, and then there's a folder 1A, the November 7th work session, and in there, there is a PDF and Word doc version of the final agenda for today. So I'm going to give one second, just to make sure everyone is on the same page here before I move on.
I have it, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so I will move for approval of the consent agenda with, for, for item A, approval of the work session minutes for October 20th, 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you, there's motion in a second, any other discussion? Secretary Amiho?
Alrighty. Excuse me, Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Manas?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Voight?
Yes.
Secretary Amiho votes yes, and Chair Burt?
Yes.
That motion is passed nine to zero.
Thank you, and that will take us to item B, so this is or the approval of the PEC transcript for October 21st, 2022, there was an error in it that we do need to have read into the record, and if you'll give me one second, I'm pulling it up real quick so I can do that, all right. So, um there's a correction to page 294 of the meeting transcript for October 21st, 2022. Um, it should say, I moved that the Chair of the Public Education Commission send a letter to La Tierra Montessori School for the Arts and Sciences, remove verbatim of the PEC's intent to take further action under the intervention ladder due to the following concerns, lack of evidence of implementation of school-specific goals, completion of a scoring protocol for those school-specific goals, and implementation of the educational program, and any non-compliance with the expected outcomes and deadline. So I will move to approve the transcript as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion in a second, any questions or comments from commissioners? All right, Secretary Amiho?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Manas?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Voight?
Yes.
Secretary Amiho votes yes, Chair Burt?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
That has passed nine to zero.
All right, that leaves us for now, our only item on our agenda for this meeting is discussion and possible action on contract and performance framework for Explore Academy Rio Rancho. And I don't know if it's Director Chavez first or Ms. Barnes first, Ms. Barnes?
Thank you, there was a subcommittee that met and negotiated a contract with Explore Academy Rio Rancho. The two documents are in the drive. If you look in the drive, there is a PEC meeting folder to the left, that's where the documents are. There is the Explore Academy Rio Rancho contract that has already been approved by their board, and the performance frameworks right after that, the final two documents are the certification from Explore that their board has done that. I had emailed the subcommittee, and I just want to highlight that, that Explore Academy made two changes to the contract that I think are clarifications, but they are different from the document that came out from there, the first one is on page seven. The contract language itself says that the educational program has to indicate if students of various ages and proficiencies can be mixed in a classroom, and that has always been in the Explore Academy documentation, so they just added that in there and they fixed a typo, I emailed those subcommittee commissioners this morning. Again, I don't see that as anything but a good clarification. And I'm happy to answer any other contracts, but I think it's more appropriate for the commissioners and Director Chavez to talk about that. But I am happy to go over anything in the contract and how the language ended up.
Yeah, so we followed a process very similar to the spring when we were negotiating with the renewal schools in the spring, and one of the one of the changes we did make this time is while we provided the option for schools to move to a new performance framework, should one be approved and adopted, we have switched it to that this school is required to move to the new contract and performance framework, should it be ready and approved by, I think, you know, early spring next year. And so, and they agreed to that, that that would be something they're willing to do, so that's, that's one of the only differences that we did with this one versus the ones in the spring. But there are the, you know, two mission-specific goals, and the education program was negotiated. And so I think if any commissioners have any questions about this, I'm happy to call on you for questions. We do have, there's also, I saw in the attendees, there, it looks like there may be a representative from Explore Academy, so if there's any questions for the school itself, I think we can bring them on as well if we, if we need to. Any questions or comments from commissioners or anybody on the negotiating committee that would like to say anything at this time? All right. All right. Um. All right, so I moved that the Public Education Commission adopt the charter contract and performance framework for Explore Academy Rio Rancho, identified as documents 5A and B for the 2022 to 2028 charter term, including the planning year. I further moved that the contract be signed by the Chair and complete contract packet be sent to the Charter School Division.
Second.
Thank you, motion and second, if there's any other comments? All right, seeing none, Secretary Amiho?
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Manas?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Voight?
Yes.
Secretary Amiho votes yes, Chair Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
That passes seven, excuse me, nine to zero.
Thank you, with that being completed, I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second, Secretary Amiho, if you could call role?
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Voight?
Yes.
Secretary Amiho votes yes. Chair Burt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Manas?
Yes.
That passes nine to zero.
All right, and so we are adjourned, so we will move into our work session now. We have two items on the work session today, the first one is PEC member and CSD input to Chair on possible issues to identify for renewing schools. So first, Julia, if you can just give an overview of the process and what we're doing at the end of today, and then Director Chavez, I'm going to turn it over to you, so you can talk to us about those preliminary recommendations that you sent down.
So this is a process that we have already done once for actually Explore Academy Rio Rancho, which is for the PEC to provide notice to the school of items, not necessarily only concerns, or anything that you would like them to be prepared to address at the renewal hearings. It is done in a working session because there are no discussions of the preliminary analyses. But rather, if there's anything else, we have already gone through and pulled from CSD's preliminary analysis, any concerns that they have outlined. Those are already in the letter, you don't need to raise them, we, we have raised them based on that, but it's whether you have anything else for any of those renewing schools that you would like added to the letter. The letter will go out, I'm anticipating tomorrow by Chair Burt, by email to each of the renewing schools. But it's so that they have notice and an opportunity to be ready for your hearing.
All right, and Director Chavez, I don't know if you want to just kind of talk about the process that you view so far and, and what's next for you all as well after this?
Yes, good afternoon commissioners, so basically you should have in your inbox as a separate email the preliminary renewal analyses that were sent to each governing body Chair and Head Administrator of the seven schools that are up for renewal. One school's preliminary analysis needed to be revised when we realized we had used the wrong version of the renewal analysis, and so that was corrected the day after you received that, I also sent you an email with a link to the folder that has all of the preliminary analyses and a link to where you can find the renewal applications on your webpage. We did our best to follow the, the structure of the renewal application and gave ratings to each of the indicators that it called for, and to provide a rich narrative to you about the school itself, what we've read about in the renewal application, what we were able to verify through our onsite visit by holding focus groups, classroom observations, school observations, and reviewing documents while onsite. This is considered a preliminary renewal analysis because it has all of the information that we are able to provide at this point. Additional academic data is forthcoming, which we hope, in addition to any issues that you raise and any feedback that we hear back from the school would be incorporated into a final renewal analysis. For example, I have already heard back from one of the school leaders who in fact had submitted a a report, that the report that we wrote said they had not, they were able to provide evidence to us, and I was able to verify at the PED side that the school actually had provided that report, so that will be changed in the final report, and I can tell you specifically which school that is and which report I'm referencing, should you want that information immediately. Otherwise, I think that the reports speak for themselves.
Great, so I think at this time what we'll do is we'll go school by school. And so I'll start at, you know, the top of our folder and kind of go down, and if you have any additional concerns, so once again, if, if the, if they did not get a meet, then that will be listed as, as a potential concern that the school will have the ability to address during their renewal hearing, and if there's, if it's something that is not on the CSD preliminary analysis, then please, you know, speak up at this time and we'll include it in the letter to the school as well. All right, so the first school we're going to be discussing is Albuquerque Collegiate. So once again, anything that's not a meets will be already designated in this letter. Are there any other concerns commissioners have in reviewing this information that could lead to a possible condition or non-renewal, Commissioner Gibson?
And I don't know if it raises to the level of a non-renewal, but I, I'd like to raise a concern as to why their kindergarten enrollment dropped almost by half this current school year, which seems possibly problematic. So we'd just like a little answer about what might be going on.
Great, we will make sure to add that to, we will make sure to add that on. Anything else for Albuquerque Collegiate? Okay. All right, the next school on our list is Altura Prepatory. Any additional concerns for Altura Prep School? Um, I would like to add on to here, Julia, just about the recruitment efforts to getting a diverse, more, a diverse background of students that are coming to their school, just to, I'm wondering what they're actively doing to promote diverse applicants to their school. Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I was going to ask that, and also I'm wondering if their drop in kindergarten enrollment has anything to do with that move, because they had a fairly significant drop in their kindergarten enrollment this year. So, you know, that is a concern we addressed when they moved, so I'd like the and continued conversation about what they're doing, seeing as they've moved out of the district of Albuquerque that they promised that they were going to serve.
Commissioner Taylor?
So just real quickly, I'm sorry, I wanted to go back to Albuquerque Collegiate and just say that, you know, make a, an observation that their current enrollment is at 147, and their their approved enrollment is 360. So I, I don't know if that's an issue or not, but it may be indicative of, of what's going on in the school, that, I mean, is that, is that an issue that we, that we raise, or is it just? It's just the way it is.
Well, we'll include that as a question that they can be prepared to talk about when they come.
Sure, okay.
Commissioner Gibson?
So can I just say, could it be that because they're not completely built out yet, I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, and I think it's
I could probably answer that real quick.
Well, I think we can, we can ask any question, we don't have to get an answer today about it, and the school can just be ready to respond to it when they come for their hearing. All right, so I'm, I'm back to Altura Prep, if there's any other questions on Altura Prepatory School, Charter School. Okay, great, we're going to move on to, we have next Cottonwood Classical Preparatory School. And this is one of, the only school this year that will be applying to the PEC is coming from a district school. Any questions to ask this school in addition to what CSD has already provided? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to Horizon Academy West, Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I just, I just noticed in there that they have no mission-specific goals. And it'd be nice for that to, to, for them to, to have some mission-specific goals that were then listed on the, on the preliminary review.
Yeah, so back, these schools were given the option to do it at this time, they're, right now, mission goals are no longer optional for future contracts.
So that will be something they'll address it, okay, all right.
Anything for Horizon Academy West to add to the Charter Schools Division analysis? Okay. The next is New Mexico Academy for the Media Arts. Any questions or additional?
We should have HoSho.
Uh, so they're, they're at the bottom of my list for some reason, I'm just going in order on the Google Drive.
I thought we were doing alphabetical, sorry.
It did look like it was mostly alphabetical, except for that one, but for some, I didn't even pay attention, Commissioner Gibson, but it's at the bottom of my, oh, I think it's because it's revised, it says revised, and so it, but it, alphabetically, it put it down to the bottom. So yeah, we'll, we'll go to that, that'll be the last one. All right, New Mexico Academy for the Media Arts, any additional questions or concerns that are not addressed by the CSD analysis? Okay, great, New Mexico Connections Academy. Commissioner Taylor?
So, New Mexico, I know this is, is fairly well spelled out, but I, I just really want them to come prepared to discuss proficiency rates and, and the, the methods by which they're going to try to improve those. Also, I, I think that, that we need to they need to have a method by which to corroborate who is on, online with them during class. We've talked about that, Commissioner Carrillo and, and, and others have mentioned that, you know, without a face in, in front of the, in front of the screen. So I'd like them to kind of come with some ideas on how they, they can accomplish that. Just confirming that they're, who they're dealing with online.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I'll second the, the request for clarification on how, what the requirements are and how they track student participation during lessons. Also, I would like to see how the school modifies their curriculum. I believe they purchased the curriculum from Pearson's, and I don't have a, a good sense of whether they do make modifications and, and or how they make those modifications to meet New Mexico standards, especially the new social studies standards. So I'd appreciate that, I'd also like some clarification as to exactly what kind of services Pearson provides for the school, it's really not that clear. So I'd like to see what they contract with Pearson's for. And if anyone on Pearson serves on their governance council.
Thank you, Commissioner Robbins?
Um, perhaps, given, given their low scores on proficiencies and everything, if they could pull together growth numbers, you know, how much are students from the time they start with connections? Year over year, how much are they growing? Are they growing at least one full, or really more than one full academic year, year over year? Because, you know, if a student comes in to eighth grade, let's say, and they're really reading and their math skills are really at, say, a fifth grade level. Well, I would expect them to be very low in, in reading and math, in math proficiency. However, if they've been there However, if they've been there for four or five years and they're still only at forty percent, you know, reading or math proficiency, that is a concern. So it, can they look at or present data on student growth year over year?
Um, I know that graduation rate was a part of the CSD analysis. Um, but I would like to ask a question of how they're, what they're, what they have done to improve their abysmal graduation rates. You don't have to put that in there, but, but to, what, what have they done to engage high school students in order to improve graduation rates? All right, Commissioner Carrillo, then Chavez, then Taylor.
Oh, I just really wanted to echo what Commissioner Taylor was saying. My big concern is uh whether the policy is or not that they have to be on screen, and if they are, how it's tracked and everything else. I just have little confidence uh in some of the virtual schools in, in handling that. And then obviously looking at growth as Commissioner Robbins said.
Commissioner Chavez?
I just want to echo what you said, uh, Chair Burt, about the graduation. I'd like to hear a little bit more about their plan to increase uh the graduation rates uh that are very, very low. Um, but the other is, I'd like to hear some more um as far as improvements for the EL population and the state uh testing participation rates uh for them, and what are they doing to address those um and make sure that, that they're servicing our Ls um has, you know, um as far as equity.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor?
So a question I had about um graduation rates was um so i- if, if a student is in high school and they attend their, their sophomore and junior year, and then they, they get acclimated to another school and move to another school. If that student graduates, is that part, I mean, are they considered a graduate, or is that, I mean, do we track those kids after?
Yeah, Director Chavez, if you want to give us a graduation rate tutorial.
So basically, New Mexico has a shared um graduation rate formula whereby a student who attends one high school and moves over to the next high school and perhaps even goes to a third, all share in the proportion, oh, um rating for that particular student. So um whether they graduate from that school or not, if they attended during high school, it is reflected in their rate.
Commissioner Gibson?
Uh, yeah, to add on, I would just like the school to talk a little bit about the reliability of their short-cycle assessments that they do conduct, um how they actually do them. So is a student actually proctored live while they're taking those tests? And that helps um to me to speak to a little bit of the reliability of the data that they're providing for us.
I think that's a great question. Um, Commissioner Chavez, I think you just didn't put your hand down from earlier, but I just want to make sure I'm not ignoring you. I don't think I'm ignoring him. Okay, all right, anything else for New Mexico Connections Academy? Okay, and the, that brings us to, yeah, the last one now is um Hozzo Academy. Any additional questions or concerns? Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I'd like the school to talk a little bit about they, they mentioned that they will modify the social studies curriculum, or Hillsdale will modify the social studies curriculum for them. But that should have already been done. So they're still waiting, so they haven't implemented the new social studies standards. And I have a concern that uh an entity outside of New Mexico is modifying those social studies um standards. So I'd like the school to broaden that conversation a little bit about what Hillsdale is providing for them in terms of their curriculum. And, well, I, I think the director covered it enough with the concerns over the mission change without. So I think that's covered.
Commissioner Chavez, do you have a, something for Hozzo? Um, all right, anything else for Hozzo Academy? I don't know, um, I, I would say, I, it's, it's like in here, and I know it's been revised, but I de- I definitely want more information about the tribal consultation and how that's working out and what they're, what's going on, more information about it. All right, anything else for now? All right. All right, seeing no other comments, we'll add those um to the CSD analysis, and we will send those out to the schools. They'll be able to provide responses written, they'll be able to respond at their hearing as well, so. Um, that'll, that'll do. All right, that brings us to the final item of our agenda, which is uh the presentation and discussion of the new draft of the Academic Performance Framework. Um, so I'm gonna have, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Voight to go ahead and give an update on the process in general, just what's happening. And then um give it, an overview of the entire draft of the Academic Performance Framework. And then she's gonna go back up and we'll go section by section after that. So I'm not gonna call on anybody until after she's gone through the entire um draft. And once again, this is just the academic part, organizational financials coming next. Um, so this is the academic part of the performance framework. She's gonna go through the whole thing, and then we'll go back up to the top and go section by section, and I'll call on folks. And we need massive input, so also, um, even folks who are attendees today. You have something to say, you're more than welcome to raise your digital hand, and we'll call on you as well. But commissioners, we're very much looking forward to your input into this um, into this draft. That being said, Vice Chair Voight, it's all yours.
Okay, thanks. And um I'm having some uh spotty internet, so hopefully I won't lose anyone. But what I'll do is I'll turn my camera off and I'll share a screen of the document. Um, so let me do that. And I'm gonna share the doc. See if this works. Oh, God.
I don't know if it'll be annoying for you, Vice Chair Voight, but I could share my screen if you want, and then you could um talk through it. I know you'd have to like tell me scroll up and down, but I don't know if that would be helpful to you, to have someone else.
Yeah, because I, when I went in to share, it was asking me to list everybody I wanted to share it with, so that was
Yeah, let me, I'll go ahead and do that.
Super. So um, this is draft eight. And I feel that we have really made good progress. Um, we've even gotten down to putting in uh metrics and measurements into the uh different performance indicators. So I'll start at the top, and everyone has had this in their folder, so hopefully you've perused it by now. And then Becca, if you can make that a little bigger. That would be great. Um, and I really want to recognize and thank Naomi Ruben DeVoe with the National Charter Institute, who's been facilitating for us since, I believe, March. And really gotten us to this point. Um, so this introduction really helps highlight and explain the lens that we're looking at the framework through, which is the results-based accountability. And we talked about this, uh, the last time we looked at the framework. So um, so these are the, this is how we are looking at the framework, and this is what we want schools to um utilize when they're asking themselves um how they're doing is the RBA model. And so going down to how this framework is used, pretty straightforward. Um, we put in the statutory renewal requirements. Go ahead, Karina.
Yeah, Commissioner Voight, um commissioners, uh, I recognize that there is an error here that the first two paragraph, or the first two statements after statutory renewal requirements is a repeat. So that will get cleaned up.
Okay, super, thanks, Karina. I would have seen that. I would, I definitely would have seen that. Um, and that's for the benefit of the schools to know what uh they are legally responsible for. Um, and that goes through the next page. And then here in part one, this is the review process, and these are the two big categories that, that comprise the academic performance framework. And those are the, the state accountability indicators and the school-specific educational measures. The criteria by which they will be evaluated are the meets or exceeds success criteria, working to meet success criteria, or that does not meet success criteria. And we delineated most recently what determines um the meets, exceeds, working to meet, does not meet. And how that weighs into the school being on track for renewal without conditions or on track with conditions or not on track for renewal at all. So to dive into this, this, the state accountability measures are pretty much already given. Um, those are non-negotiables and those are set federally. So the school has choices within this framework. They have choices for multiple measures. And uh this is not just New Mexico and not just our project team that are creating multiple measures, but it's a national movement and was uh presented on extensively at the NACSA camp conference in Minneapolis. Was that two weeks ago? How multiple measures are coming in for schools to be measured, not just by, by narrow parameters, but by broader, um, broader ways of looking at school quality. So for us, we have the state accountability system uh with option one, which is a default option that looks exclusively at the state assessment and the state measures. And you'll see that we've put in the green, yellow, and reds, the metrics for meet, succeeds, working to meet, and does not meet. So take a look at those, and then we can come back to discuss if there's any questions about any of this. And then option two for schools is what is drafted in their charter contract. So um they would be utilizing the state accountability system from option one and a supplemental proficiency and growth uh measurement. Uh, that is PED and approved and nationally normed. And then those are the, the metrics, the green, yellow, and red. Okay. And then the third option is what is drafted in the charter contract itself. And the state accounta- accountability system is replaced with PED-approved performance uh PED performance system using nationally-normed assessments. Uh-oh. Did it go away? I, I lost, oh, there it is.
Yeah, it kicked me out for a second, I'm back.
That was quick. So um, or under special circumstances, a PEC-approved assessment that's nationally-normed and agreed in the school's charter contract. So the important piece here is that it has to be something that is standardized or nationally-normed, not something that's measured by clouds and rainbows and sunsets. It's gotta be something that's um legitimate, relevant, rigorous, um, and has fidelity and substance behind it. And then to the right, we have the metrics for the meets, exceeds, working to meet, does not meet. And you'll notice that the green for the meets exceeds, the seventy percent is a little higher than the other two options. Okay, uh, outcomes for special student groups. Lots of discussion uh on our team about special student groups. Uh, but I feel really good about where we landed um in identifying the student groups and looking at equity uh as a, as the big lens for, for these students. Um, and I'll just let you read through this, it's pretty self-explanatory. And I also pay attention to the, the N size, the student group number. Needs to be identified with at least twenty students. Okay, and then option two will be what is drafted in the charter contract. Utilizing the state accountability system and supplemental proficiency and growth data for special student groups. And again, this would be uh PED-approved and nationally-normed assessments. Or with special circumstances, PEC-approved rationale or nationally-normed assessments agreed to in the school's charter contract. And then the uh metrics to the right, you'll see it's at least seventy percent to meets, to meet or exceed. So there's a lot of flexibility for the school to really show what is working for them and how their students are being successful, and it could be in pockets of different areas. Okay, and then down to option three, what is drafted in the charter contract. Again, um, the school could choose for their special student groups is to replace their accountability system with a PED-approved performance system. Again, it has to be nationally-normed and/or under special circumstances with PEC improvement. Um, and the assessments, um and then it's agreed to in their charter contract. So again, the meets or exceeds is high, it's at seventy percent. And again, the student population group has to be at least twenty students. Okay. What else do we have? Um, I, okay, mission goal. Okay, mission implementation through the ed program. Um, this, I believe, was pretty, pretty much said as far as mission specific goals. And then utilizing whether a school, we've done this before, whether the school has met their mission goal or not. Met their mission goal, um. But what we've added is the narrative around the results-based accountability model. And rather than having the examples that are bulleted down there, um. Rather, rather than having those all embedded into the educational plan or educational program. For the school to be able to highlight those within their mission goal or within their supporting narrative. And the fidelity of the educational program. We are looking for the school to. Show evidence. That they are implementing their ed program with fidelity. As they describe in their contract. And those are the, uh, metrics for the meets exceeds, working to meet, does not meet. So you'll see the green is all of the elements. The yellow is. One or more are not. Fully being implemented. And then the red is. One or more of their elements are not being implemented. And then learning culture. We're looking for student. Matriculation. And equity within. A lottery system, although it's not spelled out, but it's kind of highlighted here within the. The metrics, um, we're looking for at least 85% of students to re-enroll. Uh, every year. And then less than 65% uh, would, would be does not meet. And is. Is that it? Okay, so I know that's a lot to unpack, um. But I, but we can stand for questions, project team, or Patty, Becca, Karina, if there's anything else you'd like to add. To that overview.
And I'll definitely need people to raise their digital hand so that you go up to the top of my screen for me. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Chavez.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, everyone who worked on this. That's a lot of work and, um, it's, it's good. It's good work. I, I do have a couple of questions on the state accountability system, Glenna. I think I saw on there, um, yeah, right there. I think I saw percentile, the, uh, percentile ranks and, um. I, I don't, I, I thought our, um, our state accountability system was not based on percentile rank. Since it's not a norm reference, uh, test, it's a criterion reference test. And so I'm not sure that that's, like, like, well, maybe I'm not understanding. So could, could you like, explain that?
Yeah, so I think this is, this is, um, referencing the ranking of the ever, all the schools in the state. Secretary Chavez, so you know how they basically take them after, once they make the vistas and they align them all from. Most points to least points. That's where, and then, and then you get the TSI CSI schools in the bottom 25%.
Yeah.
That's where, that's that ranking. It's after, after it's been designated by the state. If they're in the top 50% of all schools in the state, they would be green. Yeah.
To the, the percentile, the percentages on the, uh, being a criterion. Proficiency rate. Uh, okay, good, good, good. Okay, the second one that I have is on the student groups. Um, I don't know what the section that was. But, um, I just want to make sure that, um, for the student groups. You're talking about the subgroups, but, um, in that subgroups, uh, are, are, is the EL subgroup. Also taken, taken in consideration.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Chavez, do you think in that state accountability that we have the verbiage correct, correctly stated? Uh, going back to that, do you think that would be clear to other school leaders?
Sorry, I hit my, my mute button. Uh, yeah, I, I think so. If, if you could clarify just a little bit more. But it does talk about the state report card. I didn't catch that earlier. So. I, I don't know. Maybe just a little bit of a clarification, but no, I think what she explained it, I knew exactly what you were talking about.
Okay, that might be something we want to look at while we meet tomorrow, so we'll take that feedback. To our project team tomorrow and maybe add some more verbiage that clarifies that better. Um. Okay, super, but thanks for that, for asking that.
The attendees who's raised their hand. Explore Academy, I've allowed you to speak.
Sorry, it's Karen Warner. I didn't realize I was in the generic Explore Academy account for Zoom when I logged in. Hi, everybody. Chief, Madam Chair Commissioners, it's Karen Warner from Explore Academy. Um, I just have a couple of questions. I really like, um. Overall, this new options, um, but I do have a few questions. Um. One is on, uh, the first indicator where we get three options. I understand that.
Can we, real quick, excuse me, uh. Chairbird, do we want to get the commissioners provide feedback and questions first because we are presenting this to schools? In December, I wanted the commissioners to get the, this is a presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I, there weren't any commissioners having their hands up, so I felt okay about it, but we can definitely go, I'm okay taking. This and then we'll, we'll keep going. Hopefully, maybe it'll start getting commissioners into commenting as well. Go ahead, Karen.
No worries. I'm happy to wait as well. Um, I just have a couple of questions, but thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So on the one A, the state accountability system, I understand the option one is to like, leave it with the state. The score, if you will, the, the tiers or percentages. The second, I'm having trouble with my mouse, so I can't scroll around. Hold on one second. Um, the second one. I see. Okay, the third one has, um, how will, I want to know how the percentage. Will be calculated on the third option, like if a school decided to use some other norm reference test, like their interim assessments, I presume is. Perhaps an option here. Um, how would you determine? How is that scale going to work to determine the points?
I think a lot of that's going to be coming from the school. So if the school is, the school's going to have to, um. Bring forward the data and it's going to be negotiated. It's a performance scale. Um, and so a lot of that would be coming from the school if they're.
I see.
Yeah, if they're choosing that option, they're going to have to bring forward the data and the reliability. And demonstrate how, and with evidence how that's going to be rigorous.
So this will be similar to what we've been doing with mission goals as an example. That the school proposes the, um, my only question there would be, um. Ensuring, my caution would be ensuring true rigor and, um. I've seen some mission goals that have been approved that frankly, were not very rigorous. So just would caution the PEC commissioners on that, but. I understand now. Um, my next question was on. Section 1B for the special student groups, and I see that all the groups are listed. Including, as Commissioner Chavez said, the English language learners. So I assume. It would be, as I read this, it would be any subgroup that any school has that has 20 or more students in that subgroup. Is that correct? So for small charter schools who never have more than 20. You won't be providing any growth measures for those students or any, any review. Correct?
Yeah, right now, that's, the N size, we were told it is too small to be able to. To be able to put it out publicly, and this has to be a public document.
Correct. I would propose, oh, I see. Hmm, okay, interesting because, um. It's true that the N size has to be large enough for it to be statistically reliable because the school. Accountability system goes from one year to the next, so it's not even the same group of students. However, I would propose that, and I don't know about the public piece, but option three. Could be on a year long, so it's the same kids getting the pre and post test within. The same year, which would give really true picture of whether it's 20 or five. Um, if you were looking at the actual students from beginning of year to end of year for your subgroups, instead of from last year to this year. I think it would be more reliable. I'm not sure, um, how that could be reported without being identifiable, but, um. I think if you don't report publicly the individual students, but rather as a score from those individual students, you could incorporate that, and I think that. Schools do a good or bad job of, um, helping kids grow within a year. But using last year's data to this year's could hurt or help a school just because of the population last year or this year. As opposed to actually tracking those same kids for the school year. Just a thought on option three. Then. Just to clarify, 2A1 on the mission goals, that's the same as we're doing now, correct? Okay.
Right.
Yeah, except for it's taken into the RBA instead of a SMART goal, and it's one instead of two.
Okay, we had an option of two, now it's one.
Yes.
What if one doesn't accommodate all the grade levels of a school? Um, I just thinking of that because as you know, Explore Academy, we are, so we wanted to do one for elementary and one for secondary, and they look quite different. I guess it wouldn't matter if you met.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Um, and then on the fidelity, just clarifying. This would be done through site visits or other documentation requested, or how is, is the fidelity of the education program to be evaluated? I assume that site visits and documents requested. Okay.
Yep, that would be a, a CSD. Function for sure.
Um, haven't really looked at the re-enrollment. Case yet, but, um. What is that compared to what we had before in terms of recurrent? This is re-enrollment. From one year to the next.
Right.
And it would be percentages based on the bands, so. You would have to have 85% of K5, 85% of six to eight, 85% of nine to 12. Um, I'm gonna caution there too, that the, the, it's, it is, um. Difficult. I have to do the math to figure out if this could present a problem for schools, but as you all know. There is a drop off of students, particularly at the ninth grade level. Um, or shortly after ninth grade because of other reasons, not that the school was necessarily doing a poor job. But maybe they want banned or, and they, they don't want to just participate as a charter school at this, at the district. Or sports or things like that. And so I would ask that you consider that that may impact, and I haven't really thought this all through, but may impact. Re-enrollment at some points and.
Yeah, and you'll notice the band starts from nine to 12. It doesn't go seven to 10, you know? So there's that break for ninth grade. Doesn't, it's not sequential from eight to nine, so there's that break in the band.
Right, but that means that your six to eight group coming back the next year.
Right.
I don't know how you're gonna do it, but.
So anyway, so yeah, there's a break so that we're not looking at eighth to ninth, in other words.
Well, you are because those K to five would be coming back the next year in grades one through six. Right, and six to eight would be coming back in seven through nine.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Karen, and you've provided some really great feedback, but I just think that, you know, nine through 12 is, if there's a break. There's a break because we talked about exactly what you just said. So thanks again for reiterating that.
Yeah, I, I don't understand how it's accommodated, but.
If I may, if I may, I think we're looking at, at those groups as like cohorts, right? So K through five is analyzed separately from six.
Right.
Five, between five and six.
Yep.
Then that's accommodated for.
Right, right, exactly.
But, but you're right. I think with ninth grade, like ninth grade to 10th grade, that's not. That is something a school would be impacted by in this, in this format. The, the. Conversion from eighth graders to ninth graders is not. Because for that example, like, you know, students may be in eighth grade and be like, you know what, actually, I want to go to high school somewhere else, and that's not. It's maybe outside, it may be outside of the school's control. Um, but you're right, if it's like a 10th grader who went to high school in a charter school and was like, oh, this isn't for me. That's still, that is going to be calculated in the high school re-enrollment rate.
Right, yeah. Now Patty's hand is up.
But I think we made that adjustment because we. We have robust conversations about this. That 85% kind of makes that adjustment as well, that we're not asking for a 90 or a 95% re, re-enrollment. That 85% to be in the green. I think accommodates those potential students that are going to drop off at those natural breaks.
Yeah. Anything else, Karen? I don't know.
There you go.
I got muted. So, um, uh, yeah, I, thank you, Commissioner Gibson. I appreciate that because that helps a little bit. Me understand a little bit, but I'm still confused, and so I think others would be too. If I'm this year's K to five group. Is that what you're looking at next year? Or are you looking at the K to five group next year, which was preschool to the grade four this year? And, and if it's preschool, then you don't count that one. It would be grades one through six.
Yeah, we wouldn't.
They'd be, so you would basically be the first to fifth graders each year.
So. Uh, let's take Explore Academy in Albuquerque. They currently have K to five students this year that we hope will all come back next year. So next year, you're looking at the first through five. And then the fifth graders will be considered in the six to eight window.
Yep.
And the eighth graders.
Some of your fifth graders between sixth, fifth to sixth, that would not count against you.
How is that possible?
Because we're, we're expecting that, that they may make a different middle school choice, um.
Well, then you would have to look at, the next grade band would have to be seven to eight. Not six to eight, because the only sixth graders you'll have are new kids or kids who. Retrict, matriculated up.
Well, I think it'd be the sixth graders moving to seventh grade, seventh graders moving to eighth grade, which is why we put six to eight.
So you would, okay, so you would be looking though each year at first through fifth. Seventh and eighth and 10th through 12th.
Basically. Basically.
It's not clear from how it's written, is all I would, my feedback would be.
Okay, we can, we can take a look at that.
And so far, I think that's um. All I have, thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Uh, Commissioner Chavez.
I just want to say, um, boy, Karen's experience really comes out on some of that, uh, so thanks, Karen. Uh, for that input, but I do wanna uh bring up something that she talked about for uh early on, and that is on that option three. And um, I think, I think Karen makes a great suggestion to uh make that uh pre and post. Uh, pre and post type situation, and also the concern about um. You know, uh, schools coming up with their own targets or their own uh measure of rigor. Could be uh something that that uh um. That we need to look at, and so I would say that there needs to be some type of whatever tool they use for option three. That there needs to be some type of crosswalk that is um uh statistics that. Brings together like some type of measure uh that that could explain, you know, why. Certain kids at certain levels are proficient or not proficient or nearing or not, or whatever. You know, whatever the measure is, whatever it is that they're looking for. Um, I think there needs to be some type of crosswalk between whatever tool is there. And or and or explanation and how that translates over to what we're talking about here. So what what constitutes a green, a yellow and a red, you know, that sort of thing. Um, uh, using that that crosswalk of of um, the other thing is is um. The the concern about, you know, the twenty plus and and not being a statistical group. Um, uh, if you have less than twenty, but you know, we've also got FERPA that we've got to uh consider on that. And so that's uh, but as far as them being uh not not um. Evaluated or anything like that, uh, they get caught in the whole school performance. And so it's not like they're being left out, they're they're just being included as part of the whole school, and uh so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thanks, Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you, um, going back to to option three, I I I think you guys have done a a. Uh, clarified things pretty pretty well as far as, you know, any kind of evaluation system that the school wants to to. To use as far as rigor, because it it has to be approved by the the PED. So the PED is gonna approve that prior to um them implementing that that evaluation system. And they have to, they it has to be, the the assessments have to be approved by the P E C. So so I'm, to me, that's fairly clear, we're not going to, we're not, as a group, not going to approve a a a a method for assessment. That doesn't have rigor or doesn't follow, you know, follow close enough with the the state guidelines. So, I mean, I think that's fairly clear.
Thanks. One thing, one thing I did notice, which I know I'm a part of the project group, but I'm still gonna say it now, because I saw it. Um, is I know, like, um, so these PED approved assessments are listed out, we have them here as a footnote. And I'm actually thinking that instead of having them as a footnote, we probably should just have like a link to the website. Because if the PED ever updates these, then we have to go back and update, and we're trying to get away from that. So that was one thing that I kind of thought about after we listed them all out here is, you know, a PED approved assessment might. Change before we change our performance framework again, and actually, I'm knocking on wood that that is the case. That this performance framework stays for for quite some time, and so we need to make sure that we're not putting things that are super specific in here. That need to then get updated or become outdated quickly. Yeah, thanks, that's a good idea. So, um. Commissioner Taylor, do you have another comment? Okay, that's fine, I just wanna make sure before I, I was like, I don't know if I saw you put your hand down and back up again, or if it stayed up, so I always feel bad. Um, I do know, um, we also asked um Ms. Barnes to go ahead and take a look at it. Um, from a legal perspective, um, and first we just asked her, hey, like, just look and tell us if there's any like egregiously illegal things. That we did in here, like, anything that's completely not supported by stat, like, for adverse to statute. So she did do that, we actually updated the um, the statute at the top is actually based off of a recommendation from her. But other than that, there's some little suggestions that um Julia has. I I'm thinking would be a great time, I don't know, project team, if you think this is a good time, like, just kind of have, Julia, if I could pass it over to you, and you just kind of go through. Um, walk through these pieces and like with your suggestions for us to be able to consider of whether or not that, if we like them or not.
Karen have another comment?
Hand was up again.
All right, I can.
I do, but I can wait, certainly.
You want me to go now? Chair.
Sorry, yeah, it kicked me out again, I think I tried to do too many buttons, um, do you want to share your screen? Cause, or do you want me to keep doing, or do you want to share what you have? Would that be easier?
I'm open. I can share my screen, or I can just walk you, walk you through mine, I'm trying.
I'll go ahead and I'll share my screen again, Julie, and you just walk through, I'll start at the top.
Okay, and what? What I was trying to do is put my mind to someone is. Um, you know, that we're trying to use it, and is it clear? So um, on page one, I know that Karina's already identified about the statutory renewal requirements. Actually wanna not put in the statutory renewal requirements. Um, what I wanna do is put in what the performance framework is supposed to do. So that this document has one purpose, which is clarity around the performance framework. There's five grounds for non-renewal, and one of them can be the performance framework. But what we've done, I think, on a lot of the documents we're trying to pull apart is. What is this performance framework and exactly how are the schools supposed to use it? And then the first one, if you go up just a little bit, that twenty-two, eight, B, nine. That's, and it should be up a little bit more, maybe it didn't make it in, I'm not, I think it did. So that twenty-two, eight, B, nine, that is basically the overarching piece that. To me, kind of says, the performance framework needs to be clear and clearly understood and then annually monitored. So a lot of my comments are kind of. Around clarity, I think you can do any of thing, these things that you want to do. But I think we need to make sure that we've closed. Gone full circle on a lot of them. Um, somewhat similar to what Karen was just saying, make sure that the language is super clear, maybe identifying that. K is the baseline year, and six is the baseline year, and the recurrent enrollment is the next, so that. It, um, no matter who picks it up or which new head administrator does it, it's clear. So I have pretty many of those type of comments, but I want to say first, I think that they can all be clarified. Um, so just the first thing is I just wanted it to be to the performance framework only, and that this would comply with it. The seven under nine B one, those seven component parts have to be in this performance framework. And if a school drafts their own. If you use the state accountability system, you already are getting all seven, basically. Except for recurrent enrollment right now, which you don't look at, and and in this one, you really lift it up. So I just want to make sure that's what you want to do, but if a school. Wants to provide their own, we had a school that did that last year. We walked one by one and made sure that they did it, and actually made different decisions on different ones of these. So I'm not positive that the language is quite clear enough, but it's only a language issue when you let a school do their own. Um. There is a requirement about this disaggregation of data. Um. I am. Wanting to test. That you can get the answers you want on that growth data. I I I'm not quite sure that I understand exactly what you're intending, and I just know right now. That you have indicators that you cannot, that you cannot score. And I'm wanting to make sure, and I really like, like Karina to test with Matt that you can do that.
Ju- Julia, pardon for the interruption, but this year, there is no growth data, because it's a baseline year. That changes with the results that come out of this school year twenty-two, twenty-three, right? So I know that we are like gun shy on growth data, because we haven't seen it for a while. Because this is ba- baseline on the new statewide assessments. But after this year, we will have growth data available.
Right, so I've just in my mind have been playing devil's advocate, so we used to have, we've always had statewide assessments. It's changes a lot. What people assume is gonna be there doesn't end up being there, I just want to make sure that it's gonna work. Um, because we've had statewide testing for many years, and this year we can't score it.
Because we had two years of no statewide assessments due to the pandemic, which.
When we went from A through F to a new system. You know, if I'm gonna feel better if someone can can run some of these and just show, show them to me. Um. Is this the level that you want, Cher, or do you want me to? Okay, so.
Their project team people were writing down stuff, so we can go and talk about it tomorrow, so if there's.
Yeah, and I I have notes I can give you that just for you to consider, so.
But I do want other commissioners, like, if there's something that is being suggested and other commissioners, like, oh, yeah, I definitely want that to be different. Or that's, or I want to keep it how it already is, that's really useful information for us today, so that we can. Because we are actually going to meet tomorrow, take whatever suggestions commissioners have. Like, if we can get kind of consensus ideas today, we will go and change this tomorrow. And then that will be the draft that we're going to distribute to schools, that we're gonna be giving to school leaders, we're gonna be sending out to everyone. To start getting real feedback on, so we do want as much information today that, because I don't want to change it after tomorrow. Until the, a lot of feedback from all the schools.
Okay. Um. On page two, part one. Um, at the top.
Are you talking about the, for me, page two is. The performance framework statute.
Part one, right there, okay, so it's not just see, right there, uh, the C S D is dedicated. Um, first, this is a P E C document, so at minimum, it should be both, or arguably P E C. Um, so that's just a languaging issue. The, where it says the first step will be to negotiate with the P E C to create your your charter goals. This is the only place in the document that it looks like instructions to a specific school. Um, so I think that the language should be more generic, like, the school and P E C will negotiate the performance framework indicators. And include them in the performance framework for the school, it's just that language, that's the only sentence anywhere that's kind of an instruction to the school. Um, then right below that chart. It says the ratings will be given solely based on data provided by C S D or the school. I actually don't think that's uh correct, you're using statewide data. Um, you know, they uh particularly on like the organizational framework, you may get something from P E D. And from a lawyer's perspective, I don't like the word solely, because then it preclude, you can, it can be flipped on its head, so that you couldn't do it. I would just strike that sentence. Um. So here's an example. You you say later on that you need to have minimum participation goals, like, it has to be ninety-five percent in order for the data to be given. To be valid. Well, we already know that there are some schools that don't have that data, that don't have that participation rate. So do they get a false far below if they don't have that participation rate? So that's an example where you've given like one half of the equation, but you need to also say what you mean about the other half of the equation. Um, and so if they don't provide the data, they fall far below, but what if they don't have the minimum participation? And I'm not sure that they should automatically fall far below, but it's just an example. What fairly often through here, where you've done half, but you need to close the loop all the way. So I'm not sure that that's the correct answer, but you need, you do need to answer that question. Um.
Actually, that's, is that um something commissioners, I don't know if we can get some support on, or what commissioners think is. If a school doesn't have ninety-five percent participation rate, what should happen? Uh, like, I think we could pause for one second, see if commissioners, what do you think, um, Commissioner Robbins?
Well, I think it. It is a problem if they don't have ninety-five percent, however. There can be circumstances that would. Exacerbate a school's ability to do it, whether could be communication issues. I mean, you know, we had a pandemic, and, you know, a lot of students didn't have access to internet, internet can go out if they're meeting virtually or whatever. So there can be justified reasons for for not meeting that. But um, you know, and a couple of years ago, APS actually sent out a flyer encouraging students to not participate. In 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 testing. So, you know, I I I would not encourage or approve of any school doing that. Although, you know, you already had the largest district doing that exact same thing, encourage them not to participate. But I think it is a good goal to have, I don't think a s- a school. Unless there is no justified reason, should be penalized. Because that's like saying, well, you know, we're we're gonna punish the school, because the parents don't bring their kids to school. You know, I mean, if the schools can only control certain aspects of what's going on, encourage and things like that. I I um. And I don't think, you know, if you only have ninety-four, ninety-three percent participation, that that invalidates any of the data that you get from that. That testing, it doesn't, uh, I think it puts a. A mark, I wouldn't say a red mark, but it does put a mark by that school for for not attaining proper participation. But it is a federal goal too, so I mean, that's something we have to look at, wait. If the school makes every effort to try to reach that ninety-five percent and they fail, that's one thing. But if the school is not even attempting or making efforts to attain that ninety-five percent, that to me would be an issue.
Commissioner Gibson?
Uh, I don't know, I don't know how you measure effort, that's um. Part of my challenge, but that ninety-five percent, so this is part of the school agreeing to the state accountability system. It's part of the federal requirement through S R, so I just don't see, you know, they have to meet that ninety-five percent. Uh, and I don't think we have the ability um to change that, because that is a federal requirement. If they don't want to do that, they can pick up option two or option three, but um. I don't know how you measure, we try to get ninety-five percent, I know. I don't think it should be a challenge going forward. So um, I don't, I don't know how we change that.
Karina, what happens, I know back when there is like letter grades, if the school didn't meet the ninety-five percent threshold, they. Were like dropped a letter grade, so like if they gotta be, they were under ninety-five percent, they gotta see. Is there anything that the P E D does now, when a school doesn't reach the, like, is that addressed within the accountability system? Sorry, I don't know if it got my last part.
Uh, it didn't, it, I think I heard the first part and. Uh, it didn't. It I think I heard the first part and how and you're asking how does participation rate factor into the overall performance?
And that's what I'm wondering is, is it is it counted as part of Vista's already? Because for me, if it's if it's factored into it. Then we don't need to worry about it on our side. If i- in essence, because it's already taken care of. Um, so maybe we don't need to have that statement here to lead to confusion if there's something P E D is doing to address it already.
Right. So um. I do not know for sure. That's information I can bring to the table. I know that for this year's. Well, actually for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we looked at participation rate as an indicator that was a standalone. Um, indicator in the performance framework. And so the um annual reports will have a school rating based on. Whether they um participated in all of the testing that the state requires. And you saw some of that data um on the renewal schools already. I can find out before.
Okay, that'll be good to find out because I feel like I understand the um. If we, if it's not addressed and the commission believes it is necessary to ensure that they have that ninety-five percent threshold and the P E D's not. You know, there's nothing in the accountability system that really. Does much with it other than just like say it. And we need to do something with it, then it probably does need to be just specific here as to, you know, if you don't meet the ninety-five percent mark, you automatically receive. Or like if you're agreeing, you get a yellow. If you're yellow, you get red. If you didn't meet that participation, like maybe you drop down a rating. From wherever you ended up on Vista's. But then if you didn't get the ninety-five percent mark, you drop one level on our system. I don't I don't know if that's even necessarily well thought out and fair right now, just saying that, but um. I don't know how to how else, or we just remove it. There need or there needs to be something that we do with it, or it shouldn't be there.
Just close that loop either way.
Okay, um, we can talk about that tomorrow.
I will. Say that if P E D already deals with it and it's a statewide thing, that's probably a good way to address it. Just. They've already addressed it, so we don't have to address it. So that you on those options, it does align with whatever P E D is doing, but you can do it anyway. You just have to do it completely. Um, this next, so if you go back up to the ratings. Okay, right in there. This first sentence, the school review process must provide them with information they need to act. If the school is flagged for supporter intervention. I am thinking a lot. About. Making the school an equal partner in these contracts. Right now, it's very much a. I'm P C's telling you what to do and here's this and here's what you're supposed to do. I want to look at flipping some of that. Um, to the schools having an obligation to take control over issues that you identify for them. And that so the. I also think that this sentence is what you're going to do about the performance framework. And this is just the performance framework. So we'll do something about all of that in other ways. So I think you could. Strike that sentence and just leave it. Each school will receive an academic evaluation as follows. That this document is not just like we're not looking at non-renewal. Or conditions that that you're not addressing that in this document. So I would just put each school will receive, and then I think it's an overall academic evaluation. This is another example where you've got part in here, but not everything. So how you get the whole piece in here, it is for you to decide, but I don't think they're there. So the so I'm looking at this big box at the bottom. So green is for one year. Yellow is for one year, red is for multiple years. So you have. Mi- some missing pieces in here. So first, but I think it's fine for green to be for one year. I would put that for the school year assessed. Yellow is. Um, for the school year assessed, but does not meet the criteria for not on track. You gotta make. Green, yellow and red tie in completely together, and I think that they don't yet. And I'm I'm not trying to tell you how to make them tie in. I just want to point out that there are gaps. Um, so when are you going to get a red and when are you going to get a yellow? I think potentially you're going to get a yellow. And this is where I'm thinking someone's going to challenge what you've done, so I wanted to be super clear. So you're going to get a yellow if you didn't get a red. You know, if you hit red, you're going to get red, I think, is what you intend, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So I think. You're going to need to say something in the yellow for the school year assessed, but does not meet the criteria for not on track for renewal. The not on track for renewal piece. I. Do uh. I want you to strike the word consecutive. Because. First, it's missing some, what about a school that ping pongs? Year number one, I didn't meet um. I, you know, I didn't meet this criteria, but then the next year, but I did, and then the third year I didn't, and then the fourth year I did, and then if, you know, it's if they're ping ponging all around. You as a commission may say, that's not good for kids. You know, we're not, we're not meeting what needs to happen for kids, so I don't want you to have tied your hands. Two consecutive years because. First, I don't know what happens to just get a pass if you ping pong around. So one, it's missing. Some pieces. And two, I don't want you to tie your hands. So I would like you to strike the word consecutive. Um, and then you've got the phrase at the end without improvement. I want you to strike without improvement. What does that mean? What are you talking about? I don't even, I, the school's going to say they improved. You're going to say, no, you didn't. So just not that that red one, there's a lot in there that makes me um uncertain what you mean.
Yeah, thank you for pausing there. We'll go ahead and go to questions on this or comments on this. Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time on this. Because it's um, you know, we didn't want, uh, you're not on track for renewal just because you didn't meet. One particular year, so it became challenging to. Well, how do you, how are schools clearer on when you're not on track for renewal? And it can't just, it really can't be just one writing. I I have less concern about. The years without improvement because I think the annual report is going to be able to show. Whether they improved from one year to the next. Um.
Well, if you might, if you might, if you know, one level, it's fine with me if it's. Um, green to yellow or yellow to green, but if you're in yellow and you made some improvement, what does that mean? So. If the without improvement actually means. Going.
That you moved up a.
Yeah, that you moved up a whole thing. I think the ambiguity for me is, oh, I was, I was doing terribly. And now I'm still doing terribly, but a little bit less terribly.
Listen terribly, then I got you. Okay, yeah, yeah, I I I see. I see that that it needs clarity that you have to at least be in the, you have to move up a level somehow.
And I don't mind if you also put another thing about a school that ping pongs around. But you don't even talk about a school that ping pongs around.
Right.
So if you were and take an extreme, you know. Somebody does a great job one year and then they do a terrible job, you know, envision a scenario. Out of fifty-six charter schools, you can envision any scenario. Just, just. You you need more options here than you haven't covered everything. Because now. If you have a school that ping pongs, you can only review renew with conditions. That's your only choice. I can't. You've limited yourself in a way that makes that I wish you wouldn't.
Got you.
Okay, Director Travis?
Yeah, so um, yeah, this is a a lot more thorough review and I I know you've spent some time thinking about it. Be great for it to be all written down. I think you might have said you you have that, which would be helpful um for us tomorrow, but. I would say two things. One. Directionality matters at a school. And um, a school could be holding steady with no improvement. Or terrible performance. Um, or they could be. Making improvements and then going back down. I think that what we are saying in that final box. Is that. That there is the accommodation for a ping pong. It's red, yellow, then red again. Right? And those are the, that's the three-year trend that would lead to a not on track for renewal.
Well, you wouldn't be.
So it's not two consecutive years, but there is a does not meet. Um. And then a working to me, and then a does not me. So in that case, it's not two consecutive years. But there was an improvement in the second year and then. Um, the school went back down in the third year so that there was a red. And I I think that's what the um. The team meant with that, but um, I think you're saying that's not super clear and it needs to be more clearly defined.
Well, and if I'm a lawyer for a school. The only way I can be a not on track for renewal is if I have messed up two years or three years. With does not meet or working to me. That's the only way I can do it. And if I don't. If I didn't fall into that criteria, you you have dra- we have drafted this. So you can't be in the red box unless I need that. That makes me nervous that you have limited. The not on track to renew. Um, when you might want those options. So I just think this might be one of the ways you're not on track to renew. Um. You know, I mean, pick something terrible. You know, every single one of their special ed students made no improvement at all. You know, just envision the worst case you can think of. And if you, if it's not in that, that red box being narrow. Is going to work against you. Because I'm going to be a lawyer and I'm going to say, whoop, not in that red box. I'm good. You have to renew me with conditions.
Director Travis anymore? Okay, um, Commissioner Robbins?
Couldn't we put a disclaimer on it? That this is a guide and is does not restrict. The commission from making a final judgment based upon the most current information available. Because obviously you can go through and this looks like everything's fine, everything, then all of a sudden things fall apart totally. In a week or two and we have to take action to not renew or to revoke. You know, it would seem that this is, it's an indicator, it's not a definitive. Got guide. In other words, it it doesn't require. Doesn't restrict the commission. From making or commissioners from making a judgment. But it is to give this.
Add to the not on track for renewal. Or sufficiently serious concerns, just some some kind of. General catchall. That 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 closes the loop for me. That's a good way to do it.
Yeah, just to put it in it or 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 present serious cons- uh, serious concerns for the commission.
Yeah, maybe we work on that language, but yes.
Right.
Commissioner Boyd?
You're mute. Blenna?
Yeah, if you can forward us what you have written down in your notes so that we can have it for our project team meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
You have anything written? That'd be awesome. Commissioner Gibson?
Sorry, I was writing down notes. Um, yeah, uh, and thanks for bringing that back up again, um, Commissioner Robbins. Because we did talk about, you know, a a statement like that so that whatever, whatever this is. It never ties the hands of a commission that we can't take a vote and and do this. So. Um, I appreciate because that, you know, eh, after going over this again, it it doesn't appear anywhere. So it's important to bring that back. So thanks.
Um. On. On the next sections. Um. I think you can do any of these things that you want. I think like um. Commissioner Chavez, it's just raised like clarity of the fiftieth percentile. What does that mean? So that, you know, it's really, really clear what you're intending and how that scoring is. Um. Then on option two, for example, then again, this is clarity. You've got two things here. You've got the overall state accountability and you have their own. Information below, but on the right side. It only talks about. The second of the two. So green is at or above national norms for proficiency about reading and math. How does that? I just don't understand the math of how it ties in. So. How does, just how does this work? Like, how is the state accountability and. That supplemental growth, how you do do ring the bell one way or the other? So I'm just not quite, I think the idea is fine, but I'm not sure that there's clarity of that maybe. I'm just not sure how it works. So I'm a kid. Or this is a school up above and I'm above fifty percent. And then how does the supplemental growth get added in? So I don't. I would actually think it'd be a good idea to take a school and try to score it by what you mean and see if you can score it. Because I'm not positive exactly what you mean. Um, and then. The third one. Maybe is okay. I just would like to see. Because you set a level at seventy perc- uh, it's it, the green has to be seventy percent. I would just. Want to make sure that you can really, that it's drafted in a way that you can really score it. Um. But maybe so. Um, and then here's another one. Um. Of the ninety-five percent of students. A a lot of times. And that was true in the school that did their own indicators. They didn't score every kid. They scored ninety-five percent of students identified to be tested. Um. So they're invalid and then what happened? So it's that same kind of comment again. It's the what if it doesn't happen? So that's another place where that is. Um. On one B. Maybe, maybe I just don't know enough about it. Um, but I. I just worry about the clarity of exactly what the school is going to do. So you have. kids that could be counted two or three times. Let's say that I was a low-income student who's Native American and I'm an English language learner, um, and I have a disability. Am I counted four times? Um, how, and maybe that already works already in how these special student groups are done. Um, and then gender, race and ethnicity, you're gonna get all the kids. So either you're female or male, you're some kind of race and some kind of ethnicity. So I don't know if you, that seems to be the whole world of the school again. Um, and then do you, does it change each year? And my question on this whole thing is, pick a school and try to score them right now, this year. I'm not, I just am worried about logistically how that's gonna work. Um, then on, what, my whole question all the way through this one is I just don't know how, I just am not sure about the language and I'm not sure how it works. So I would want someone to actually score it and see, can you score it in a way that everyone would understand? Um, and I think you can do what you wanna do. I just am worried about the language. And does it change? I mean, and then what is a growth target for a Native American student? Is that set every year by PED? What if they don't set it? What are, what is a goal for the girls in the school? Who sets that? Just how, how, my whole question on B is how would that work?
Um, can I pause it? Can I pause you there for a second? Cause Commissioner Gibson has her hand up. Oh, no, you don't. Never mind. Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't lower it. Sorry.
The, um, mission specific goal, I think it would be really good to have an example so that people understand that. But I think that that is just a clarification thing. The, and, and maybe we've already been grappling with this, but there is a, um, the SEL survey and the safe environment survey. So this is one of five. So it's very high stakes. And if a school chooses, and maybe this is what Karen was saying, if a school chooses a safe environment survey as one-fifth of the high-stakes decision, do you have enough of these other things in here? And maybe you do. And then, um, at least one school did choose to have a high-stakes decision for an SEL survey. There's also information out there that it shouldn't be used for that. So I, I just think that there's a little bit of it being, um, very readily assessed for language acquisition, for example, versus how would you score a safe environment? And is that, is that what, what you want? But maybe we've already been dealing with that. So maybe we're okay on that one. Um, to B, again, it's one of five, so it's high stakes. What does fidelity mean and who decides it? And how is it not just subjective? And I do agree that it would be CSD. But if you have different people at CSD, I, I think you would need to define that fairly clearly because it's moving from one organizational framework out of like twenty to twenty to one of five high-stakes decisions. And then I think that you, I, I urge you to look really carefully at the red because, um, if it's not being implemented, I mean, a school could could make it so that they'd never get a red, but they could still be doing a terrible job. So I just urge you to look carefully at that and have it not be subjective and have it, and you're gonna have to define it elsewhere, somewhere. The last one on conducive learning culture. There are seven elements that are required out of a performance framework. I'll tell you right now, you are not scoring recurring enrollment at all. It's the one of the elements that from when I was here five years ago to now, just completely dropped off. And you're now choosing, which you can do, you absolutely can, but you're now elevating it to one of the most important ones. And is that, um, and then, and then argue with yourself a little bit. Um, and I think Karen already raised this. What if the reasons that kids are leaving your school? If I'm a really small school and I live right by Kirtland Air Force Base and students move because their parents are deployed somewhere else, are you gonna get a does-not-meet because that happened? And so just, you can do this one. Um, and I think there's two questions. One, do you want to? And then the second thing is, um, is how does a school show that the recurrent enrollment was really related to their school? So it feels like you're gonna get a lot of arguments on that one as to why that wasn't fair or this and for a really small charter. That can be one family with six kids that moved away or moved back or moved away and moved back and moved away and moved back. That's that same thing that they could ping pong for a reason. And then the, the last thing I just wanna say about that is those seven elements that are required, um, academic performance, growth, achievement gaps, attendance, recurrent enrollment, post-secondary readiness and graduation rates. A bunch of them are rolled into one. And then if you split one of them out, you really have, uh, you really have heightened that one. And maybe you've got the right balance and you well may, because you do have proficiency and growth. And so maybe you really do have a lot of academics. Um, but we get arguments a lot that, that if you've rolled them all up into one, I'll give you the classic example, graduation rates. The lawyers tell me all the time, you can't non-renew a school for a graduation rate. I'm like, why ever not? It's one of these seven. It's a material term of the contract, but their argument is it's rolled up in a ball. You can't pull it back out individually. So I just wanna think about that. And do you have the balance you want? So, you know, the question I was asked earlier was, is there anything that, that is illegal? That's a bad word, but, uh, you know, that's really outrageous. No, I think that it's in here. It's really the, put on the hat of a school arguing to not be closed. And then I think that 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 just, I think just as written right now, there's a lot of holes that if I was a lawyer for a school, I could, could you ever close a school? You know? So it's just really language clarification. So I'm happy to send this to you. It looks kind of like there's a ton of comments, um, but they're all in the nature of, of this kind of i- idea to tighten it up. And frankly, tighten it up from, could we, if I wanted to close a school, could I?
All right, Commissioner Robbins?
Yes, I, I agree with what, uh, this Barnes was saying in terms of this re-enrollment thing. APS, for example, thirty percent of students do, they, the school they start at, they finish at a different school that year. Thirty percent because they have dual parents, because of moving, because of a variety of other reasons. But thirty percent, so you're, you're gonna get a significant number. You know, it could trickle down to these charter schools where you don't get eighty-five percent. It has nothing to do with the quality of school or anything. It has simply to do with employment, the, the, uh, the situation in the family, things like that, nothing to do, transportation problems, things like that. So I, I, I think this is or can be very problematic if we put a great emphasis on re-enrollment.
All right, any other? Julia, is there any more? Is that?
No, I'll try to change this, like there. I don't want you to read too much in the comment I put to the right. I'm just trying to, to make the point for you to think about it. So I, I, I think you put in a tremendous amount of work and I think that it's very exciting and I am not, I'm just trying to make it be tight. So I don't wanna send it to you and have you be like, I have a headache.
No, I think it's good. Cause I mean, the, we have been looking at this over and over and over and over. And sometimes what makes so much sense to us, because we've been looking at it week after week after week, when you give it to a fresh set of eyes, it, you know, it comes out that it's like, oh, that doesn't make as much sense as you all think it does. And so those are, that's why we need to get it out, right? Like, that's what we've been talking about. It's, it's exactly what we need input for. Cause we think this is great and we understand all of it, but we've been working on it for an hour and a half every Tuesday for the last however many months. So, no, I think those are the kind of like constructive criticism that's really, really needed right now today so that we can go out with a little bit more clarity with this, a, a, a little bit tweaked of a draft based off of even just everyone's initial impressions that are on this call right now. That's exactly what we need it for. So I hope no one thinks that they need to apologize for being constructively criticizing what we've done, because I think that's what we needed. Uh, Commissioner Voight?
Yeah, thank you. No, I am so appreciative to hear this feedback. I mean, it really helps open things up in my brain. So, yeah, thank you, everybody, for everything you've said.
All right, so I'll go back, um, out, if, if there's anybody else that has any comments right now, we're happy to take them. I think also at this time, just so everyone knows, I mean, this is not, this is the beginning of being able to like provide input. So, um, we'll meet for, once again, we'll meet at our normal project time tomorrow to, um, and, and go over kind of what we heard today, create, um, an updated version of this that takes into account the comments that we heard. And then, um, Director Chavez is gonna work with her team to get, um, that updated version posted online. And there'll be a survey link right underneath it. So everyone can go through, including commissioners. If you're like thinking about this next week and you're like, actually, I have this other idea. This is when you can start using that comment form and submitting comments, um, again, on this, um, on the draft. Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I think we have a little more time than that because tomorrow we're not meeting with Naomi. We're meeting on the financial.
Yep, that's right.
I'm, I'm texting, I'm texting with Naomi right now and can arrange for a follow-up time to sit down with her and consider, um, these, the feedback. Because I do think that our goal was to get a nice draft out with the survey for everybody and, um,
Yeah, it was, but I know it's the financial person we're meeting with tomorrow.
All right, great. Well, this is, um, this is in your Google Drive. So, you know, people can take a look through it, keep, um, you know, look through it. And if there's anything that, if you're confused by it, that means other people will be confused by it. So don't hesitate to, to say like that something's confusing. Cause you know, if, no matter how good our intent is, if it doesn't make sense to someone reading it and you know, we're not gonna be able to sit there and explain it to everybody, one-to-one and give a presentation on this. So it needs to really speak for itself. So that's what we really need people's help on is if there's confusing stuff in it, say it's confusing because we need, that means we need to clarify. If you like the intent, great. Um, but if it's confusing, that's, that's dangerous. I mean, it's, it, we're not in a good space if it's, if it's confusing. So, um, that's really good feedback for us to get. I don't see any other hands up. I also am sharing my screen and I can't see very many people. So I do apologize for that too. But I usually, if you have your hand up, it goes up to the top for me. Um, but that is it for our agenda for today. So, um, I think we'll go ahead. Once commissioners, you're, you know, you can start talking, if you run into school leaders, if you wanna talk to them, start letting them know that this is coming, that, that we have a draft. It's, we need to start getting feedback on it. Um, over this next month and a half especially, uh, we'll be presenting it at the, um, Public Charter Schools in New Mexico Conference. So, um, the project team will for sure be there, but everyone, every other commissioner is welcome to come join us, get that feedback in person, um, from people. So just be aware of that as well and you're, everyone's invited. Um, but yeah, uh, I think that's it for now. And then, yeah, Julia, if you'll just send that over to the project team, we'll, we'll be able to take a look at that, the actual notes and comments and take all that into consideration. And we really appreciate everyone, um, going through this with us today. And I think we'll be ramping up and there'll be lots more to come. At probably every meeting, we'll have something new at this point. All right. Well, I appreciate you all. I don't even, I don't think I have to adjourn or anything. So I'll just see you in the, at the next meeting. Thank you all. Have a good day. Bye.